I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Meeting is in the Wahoo City Council, July 8th, 2025, 7:00 PM. Open Meetings Act is posted on the wall. Call Committee of Order and roll call.
Stuart Crean.
Here.
Shane Sweet.
Here.
Carl Walker.
Here.
Brian Iguis.
Here.
Chris Rappel.
Here.
Got your thing.
Okay, uh, there's no talk of races. Uh, is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to something that's not on the agenda? There you go, buddy, okay. Uh, well, I have the report, I have the reports. Chief, please report, please.
Hello.
Yep.
I'll get started here real quick, just to address a few things. I was running, uh, late today, busy, I didn't get a lot done. Uh, I got notice, I think, just last Thursday, and I've just been one of them weeks plus the fourth, so I apologize for not having nothing better than this. But, uh, one of the things I do, I'm just gonna throw out some stats there and then talk about this stuff a little bit. Um, some of the stats, we got, uh, you know, there was, uh, I know there's been some complaints about people getting stopped for little ticky tack things and stuff, so I thought, well, I'll throw that out there. Some social media comments and stuff, there's been a lot of social media stuff going on, so I'll just address it. You know, I think, uh, we looked at some stats and, uh, over a period of time, we looked and we noticed that there was like four hundred twenty-eight traffic stops for people running stop signs. Um, of those, uh, two hundred and eighty-five of those were issued warning citations and, uh, one hundred, uh, I take that back, four hundred twenty-eight traffic stops of all the tra- uh, traffic stops only. Of those, uh, but most of those had other violations as well, such as expired plates or headlight, light equipment violations. Three hundred twelve were for just the traffic stop sign only. Um, two hundred eighty-five of those were just warning citations. Uh, one hundred forty-three of those resulted in arrest for something too. Um, and only twenty-seven of them actually got a citation where they had to pay it, and they might have been involved in accidents or something too. So, it's, you know, one of the things that we do, I do encourage my guys to stay active when they're out there doing stuff. Um, I think as far as incidents go, uh, this year so far, the first six months, we've had, uh, hundred, uh, one thousand eight hundred seventeen incidents. Uh, I think from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-one, they averaged twenty-four hundred nine during that, that three-year period. Um, we looked down, uh, traffic citations, three hundred fifty-two citations. Uh, we're down a little bit from the citations from over last year, I think we wrote one thousand and some citations. Uh, I'll say a lot of that goes to Wyatt Bruesler. Uh, he was hired by the county sheriffs, uh, they hired him from us, and he did a lot of, ran a lot of traffic citations. Um, uh, I think during that era from two thousand nineteen to twenty-one, they averaged about two hundred ninety-six citations. Uh, one of the things I'll point out too, that I could point out, um, uh, I look, I checked with another city about our similar size and stuff, about how many drug cases they had, uh, in the course. I'd say it's a similar demographic, similar problems than we have. Uh, they had like four drug cases this year. I think when I started here, uh, you look back in two thousand nineteen to twenty-one, that, that three-year period before I started, they, I think, were like eight to twelve drug cases. So far this year, we've had forty-three. Um, and if you go back even, uh, and I think it's slowed down from where we were when we first started here with some of the guys. And we have some real good guys, who are experienced at drug interdiction and stuff as well. The K-9 deployments, when I started in two thousand twenty-three, they were at sixty-one, which is about average for what Omaha K-9s, I think they averaged about seventy-nine deployments. Two thousand twenty-four, we were down, but then I was busy that year too because we were short-staffed, so we had, uh, fewer officers, I only got nine deployments. So far this year, we were running about fifteen. And one of the things that I point out there, um, the social media stuff, at first I was like, the people that were complaining, I thought, well, that's probably good advertising for us, uh, that it's showing that, hey, you're getting pulled over, you're getting searched, you're getting looked at, you know, it was really buzzing in that community that, um, worries about being pulled over for drugs and stuff. So, I thought it was a good thing, but one of the things that I noticed that I was kinda concerned about was we were seeing a lot of little old ladies and stuff, elderly ladies and stuff were like starting to get concerned, boy, we got a bad belief out of it, we're hearing this stuff on social media. So, I was going around a lot, talking to them, and we do investigate, uh, all complaints, even, like in Omaha, I think, we never, they never used to take secondhand complaints. If we get wind of something on social media, we investigate it, as if we would any other citizen coming and complaining. And I think one of the ladies that even posted something, the one, uh, early on when that stuff started, she later posted on somebody else's post, I, once I learned out the facts, I apologized to them. I apologized to the officers, and she came in and apologized to me later. Um, and, uh, so there's a lot of, a lot of misinformation that was going on, and I'd just like to say, if you know anything, we strive to do the best we can. Uh, and we also strive to, we, we do our body cameras, they, they're always a help because they show stuff, and if we make a mistake, we can look at it and say, hey, let's clean this up, let's train this, you know, let's do better next time. So, we, we try real hard on that. Um, but that's kinda where we are on that, so I just wanted to throw some of that out there. During the year, we'll get all the stats together. Um, one of the other things that, uh, I, I mentioned, we lost Wyatt Bruesler as an officer, went to the sheriffs, but, uh, we gained Juan Ramirez. Uh, Juan Ramirez, uh, he originally is a Lincoln kid, uh, young guy, he, uh, got hired by Fall City. He told them, hey, I wanna, I wanna get hired, so he got hired right now, and he said, I'll do a contract for you. He completed his contract, did a three-year contract for them, and then he was ready to move on, he wanted to get back closer to Lincoln. So, we got him for now, uh, he's got a college degree, he speaks fluent Spanish, uh, and it's kinda neat to see him out there working with, uh, Hispanic population. I think it just makes him feel at ease, there's a lot of angst amongst the Hispanic community, especially if they don't speak English and stuff, uh, with what's going on at the national level with ICE and everything. So, I think he's been a great addition, and I'll say he did a, he did a great job that I don't know how we would have handled a case involving a sexual assault, that he ended up, uh, basically clearing the case for us, and did a, did a really good job. I need to write an attaboy for him for that because that was an excellent police, police work that he did on that. And nobody in the case spoke English, so it was a very, very, very good job. Um, cruisers, we got a new police cruiser, uh, it's worked good, if you've seen it, it's looks kinda like the state troopers vehicles. We got a real good deal on it, uh, we got it up and running finally, uh, it was, I think, um, some crazy, how many weeks it was before they could get all these weapons in and stuff, it was all back ordered. But, uh, one of the things else that's going on is with the, the sheriff's department, I don't know if you've heard or not, they're switching to a new CAD system. Um, we switched.
Can you explain what that does?
Yeah, it's basically the computer database, the, the police database for the sheriff's department. Um, I think in two thousand, go back a little bit, two thousand four, I think we switched from a system to, uh, what was called SLEW, and everybody, a lot of people in the county were using SLEW. Then I think in two thousand nineteen, and I'm kinda going off memory here a little bit, two thousand nineteen, when Bruce Farrell started here, uh, he joined with the county and they went to, uh, the, the JDS system, Justice Data Systems. And it was a nice computer system, um, it wasn't necessarily super handy for the dispatchers, and the dispatchers weren't happy with it. Um, so they wanted to switch to a new system, and I think they just, uh, they're leaving, they decided, uh, we didn't get any notice or anything of it, but they just, they're, they're switching to a new system. And it's called the FLEX system. Um, it's got some fancy bells and whistles on it too. Uh, one of the things that I don't like, although we may lose like all the intel, we've been collecting intel for the last three years since I got here, and it didn't go very deep because it'd only been about six years of information. Everything else was on the, on the SLEW system, when you transfer that, a lot of the information reports and the intel reports, uh, don't come up, so if you run somebody's name, you get a whole list of everything that they've done. She's like, oh, okay, the, the person's been involved in this and that, and it helps on investigations and stuff. So, uh, we got one estimate that came in at like, uh, fifty-two thousand, five thousand dollars a year for maintenance and, um, that was our part, but none of this is final, we haven't gotten a final thing, even though I know they're up, getting the system up and working at the county. And they're gonna have to maintain something as a backup for the JDS too, the information that's in JDS, and any active cases will have to be hand-loaded from the, the old system to the new system. Um, so there, there's a lot of things to work out, and then I think it came back with another twenty-five thou- I'm sorry, fifty-two thousand for the first year, then they come back with another estimate that maybe twenty-five thousand. I think that's taken out some of the, some of the stuff for scanners, which does for property, you know, we really don't need that. We, uh, have a good prop, uh, evidence collection system now, you know, so, um, we don't know, but we, we might have an unexpected expense there that, uh, we can't help it, and even if we stay with the, the same Justice Data System, we're gonna have to do like a, uh, computer stuff to do the link-up so they can still get the information. And I don't know how that affects statistics going forward, so some of these stats that we pulled up, um, may change as well. I don't know how that go all the way.
Just a quick question, who makes the decision of their, of the CAD? Chris, the sheriff?
Uh, I went through the county board, so I went, I think Chris was the one that did it, and I went through the county board.
So, you know, I mean, as far as communication between the two reporters, you take that, that a little more P?
Well, they made the decision on their own, they made the decision on their own, um, yeah, and we can do what we wanna do on our own, so. But, yeah, there was no, there was no consulting, there was no, there's other than, hey, we're, we're thinking about doing this, and then next I knew that they made the decision, so, uh, as far as anything else going, um, one of the things is too, we just finished the bike rodeo, you know, we continue to do that, we'll build a youth boxing club on Wednesday nights, we're still doing that. Um, uh, one of the other things that we got going is, uh, oh, this, this fall, hopefully, uh, I, I, hopefully we'll be able to bring on Kevin Stupenholz, and he'd be up there and work with the schools maybe as a, a resource, resource officer, and maybe engage in our drug court. Uh, the one officer that was our drug court officer that she would go to, I shouldn't say drug court anymore, it's called Problem Solving Court now. Um, uh, they ended up leaving the agency, and they were on our, they were the only one that was trained up on it, and we don't have anybody that's trained up to go, kinda like DARE, we didn't have a DARE officer that's trained on DARE, so that's maybe, it will be a cabinet to go up there and teach some stuff, so, that's what we're hoping for. Does anybody got any questions or anything too, if you guys ever hear of any things, or did people call, or somebody called in, uh, I think got a, uh, a complaint, um, and I heard about it, we did look into it the best we can, but if you guys ever get complaints from the public, I would love to hear from you guys, where you guys, hey, Joe, I heard this, and then we can fall back. And it's really worked well when we go up and we talk to the people that maybe had a problem, and maybe it comes third-hand, you know, I heard, we heard a deal where one of, one person was complaint, actually, somebody complained, I don't know how we got it, but, uh, tracked it up, tracked it down, tracked down the, the lady that called in and wanted to complain on, on our officers, and then I found out, well, it wasn't her, it was her neighbor, and I know the neighbor really well, and it was his grandson that had an issue, and then I was like, oh, I explained to her what happened, and then it was a concerned neighbor called in on the grandson, a suspicious person, and then it drew a bunch of police officers there, and it was actually the county that were the ones that stopped them, not even us, so, uh, just stuff like that happens, but she'd heard stuff on social media and was concerned about stuff and, you know, but, but it was good to explain the, the whole circumstances of it, and, you know, that it was just a concerned neighbor calling in, a suspicious person, so, uh, like I say, yeah, or everything, give us, give us the information, we'll, we'll get it.
A question, you did mention earlier on the drugs, I wanna make sure I clarify it, was, did it seem like the number for drug stops? Or drug, it was up to forty-three?
Forty-three this year.
Forty-three what?
Arrest.
Arrest, okay, that seems like a big increase, does that mean we're just?
No, I would say it's down from when I started.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
So, so we're getting ahead of this?
I think we were, I think, uh, I'd have to go back and look, Stuart, I can let you know, but, um, I, for some reason I thought we had two hundred the first year.
I couldn't remember.
Yeah, it was, it was pretty high.
Okay.
Uh, and like I say, I did this in a matter of minutes before I came, after I left the bike rodeo, I went to the office and got sidetracked a little bit, I put some stuff together.
I'm, I'm just aware of that issue, and, and I'm glad you take.
But I don't think it's, I, I think it's down, and actually even in June, it's even really down.
Okay.
Uh, which maybe was the social media stuff, uh, I don't know, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have some, a question, we're another year in with the ATV, UTV, uh, do you have any insider thoughts you wanna share about that? How it's going, any concerns?
You know, we haven't had any problems with it, I think we've had one person on a golf court that was arrested for drunk driving with a suspended license.
Okay.
So, other than that, uh, that was it. And I don't think his ATV, he was pulled over for not having an ATV sticker on his thing, so, under golf cart.
But everybody that you're seeing then is, is registering and having the stickers?
Yeah, so far, I know we've had to, we've, we've have given some people warnings, or wouldn't talk to people, we heard people were driving without it, and we wouldn't have to go talk to people and say, hey, but people are pretty compliant so far.
That's good.
And nobody's been hurt, knock on wood, so.
And then your, your summer boxing is, is underway again?
It is.
And that's good, I feel positive from, from people about it, so that's very, I'm glad there.
Yeah.
It's a good service.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
All right, hello everyone, um, so since we last spoke, which was probably spring, summertime, um, twenty years this year for the Aquatic Center, hard to believe, right? Uh, we opened that facility twenty years ago, so, uh, a little over as of yesterday, not counting today's numbers, about eleven thousand come through there so far for the summer. Down probably by average, but think about the late May Memorial Weekend, early June, we had when it comes to temperature and rain, and so it was really an unusual start to our year for the pool season. Um, yep, um, but we rebounded, excuse me, rebounded well there, and the pool seems to be performing well. We have a good staff this year as well, which is always a concern, right, a little pinch of staffing in those facilities. Um, some aquatic programming, swim lessons, third session started yesterday, we will run between three hundred and fifty to four hundred kids through that each summer in a three-session time period. Want to also give a shout-out to our swim team, which you may not know we have, this is, I believe, our seventh year for the Wahoo Otters. It's a great program that was started by Andrea Lloyd and a handful of other parents, but they hosted, as they have for the last four years, their own swim meet, so we don't like, not only do we host baseball, softball in the summer, we host swim meets. They had nine teams from as far away as Hardington here, had, had a hundred and eighty kids swimming last Tuesday, a week ago today. So, it was a great event, it was their largest meet ever, so they do a nice job, it's all volunteer-driven, run through our department, they practice in the morning, so it's a program that has continued to grow, they got about twenty-five kids in that program. The other nice thing that we've seen materialize is future lifeguards, which is huge, right? We talked about how can we recruit young people to that position, and that, that team concept and getting those kids in that program, eventually they, uh, matriculate to us, we've seen that happen, we've got a couple of new ones this year that were in that program five years ago.
What's, what's the age range for the otters?
It's a great question, you, um, and I wanna say, Chris, we are gonna go all the way up to high school age, so secondary high school, and I believe starting level, gosh, don't hold me to this, but it's probably like five to seven, somewhere in that. There's a swim test they do with them at the beginning of the summer, to make sure they can do some things pretty independently, because, you know, we're talking about, um, very competitive lap swimming type of things, working on strokes, so we're not, they don't wanna have to worry about kids being unsafe in the water, so there's a test before they can be part of the team to make sure they got the, the prerequisite skill sets, but I believe it's like five to seven, somewhere in that, neck of the woods, age-wise. So, it's a great program.
Nice.
And, uh, they're at a conference, they actually have a meet tomorrow night, and they finish up this weekend at their conference meet, so, I wanna mention that, so our Aquatic Center, again, we're over halfway through that, we close August tenth, so we're a month away from closing, um, which is hard to believe, the summer's flown by, yeah. All right, moving on to our other areas that, you know, we take care of, recreation programming, we have over two hundred kids down at Hapbury T-Ball Coach Pitch, that's boys and girls, summer camp, we're over halfway through, we got twenty-five kids, that's our maximum every week. Um, they'll be coming here to the library, we have our shutdown week at the Civic Center end of July, like we always do. Um, Bob Schmitz in charge of that program, and so we'll have that run on. In less than a month, we will start flag football and volleyball, that is our largest youth sports program. We'll probably run over four hundred kids, close to five hundred through those two programs, volleyball and football. So, starting August ninth, on Saturday morning, we'll see a bunch of cars and parking lots will be filled at Hapbury on Saturday mornings through the end of September. So, we just roll right into one season after another, we'll get about thirty days off here, and then we go right into that. Um, so rec programming continues to be strong there, we're just transitioning into that next season. Uh, Civic Center, Melissa's got the report, it made out of major packets, but that number, if you scroll up, Melissa, that's Bob's report, if you go to my report with, um, just yet, the monthly report, our number was three thousand eight hundred eighty-four in Civic in the month of June, that breaks a ten-year-old record, so we had our highest June ever from two thousand and fifteen, so, you think about it, you know, you're like, well, summer, it drops off, it really doesn't, our, our numbers swell a little bit because of all the high school students and college students that come back in the summer to come and lift and use the facility and swim and all the other things, so, big number there for the Civic Center in June, we continue that, we expect that to continue through July. You can see we average about a hundred and eighty-two each day, again, keeping in mind we're closed on Sundays. I know Jovan can attest to it, and anybody else that comes in, Carl, Stu, you guys know how busy it is during the day, anytime of the day, mornings and nuns and evenings anymore, so. Um, park staff, busy, always our busiest time of the year with outdoor facilities. Uh, we welcomed two new staff members, wanna make mention of that, we brought on Tony Thorson, May twenty-seventh. Tony comes to us as a Wahoo native, young man, he's got great skill sets, he's a hard worker, he is a great asset for our department, and he's paid dividends already, he is our lead person for our turf grass and horticulture program, which is where his degree comes from. He went to Southeast and Beatrice, as that is his degree, wouldn't, started out at UNL at the Ag Research or at the, uh, actually at the ARDC or whatever the headquarters building is called, and has come to us here, and worked for us, and is our lead person with that area, and he's really done a nice job with our, with our landscape beds, with our turf grass. We'll, we'll continue to see a lot of good things coming from him. Uh, and then we also hired Kurt Specht back on June twenty-third, so Kurt's been with us for about two and a half weeks. Uh, due to retirement, we had an open position, we restructured just a little bit. Luke Rustemeyer is now the overall maintenance parks and public properties maintenance supervisor. Kirk is, uh, an employee with him as a maintenance person, his lead role though will be the buildings, and so, he'll take care of Civic Center, Senior Center, this building, as well as the City Hall building, and we welcomed him on, he's got some really good skill sets as well. So, we're excited about our staff, we feel like we have a very good staff that's got some longevity to it, which is important these days, so. Uh, but they've been busy, uh, this week, starting Friday, if you go down to Crawford, we'll be hosting yet again, WBA, Wahoo Baseball Association is the host of it, we take care of a lot of that with the facility, of course, but they will be the hosts of the Area Legion tournaments, a seven-team tournament, um, there'll be a lot of traffic down there for the next five days. That is the last of eight tournaments we've had this summer, six at Hapbury, two at Crawford, so we've had a busy summer as well with tournaments, ball field, or ball tournaments during the months of, basically starting in April down through the end of July here. And we'll wrap it all up with the Koanis All-Star Game, August ninth, right, is that right?
Yeah.
On that Saturday, so if you have a chance, but down there, it's an awfully nice event. That's well over twenty years plus that that's been happening there, Crawford as well. Uh, beyond that, the guys are just busting to keep up with all of the mowing going on right now with the water and rain, so all of the normal maintenance activities there as well, trying to fit in some projects here and there as they can. Senior Services remains vibrant, meal program strong, four hundred sixty-nine meals in June that were served, whether it was delivered or counter get, thrift store booming, of course, June was a garage sale month, so guess what happens when people don't sell stuff at their garage sale, they try to get it over to the thrift store, so they've actually had to deny or not, or close donations on several days because they just are so slammed with donations during garage sale time. But they're doing on an average month, I would say averaging between eight to ten thousand in gross sales every month. Okay, so a very vibrant operation. Debbie Wade is the manager, has been there for almost a year now, she does a fantastic job for that, for us there. Uh, what am I missing? Make that cover shot everything, so, um, I know Joe wants his numbers to go down, we like our numbers up, and a lot of them, a lot of them are up for us, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Can you, uh, point out to the council members, the improvements to the playground at Hapry?
Yeah, absolutely, probably saw some social media posting, so that playground, um, was a part of our budget process, um, was requested, allocated, and expended, um, that replaced a, a structure that was well over twenty-five to thirty years old, if you remember Terry, those who have been around for a while, Terry and Lee Anne Bullock donated it in memory of their daughter before I even came here to Wahoo. But, uh, it was getting to a point where we couldn't even find parts for it, it was, it was getting unsafe, and so we replaced it with what you see down there, that's a ninety thousand dollar structure. And included just, not just the structure, but also the turf, which we added, um, basically, um, what am I gonna say? Football turf, um, artificial turf, it's kinda the newest thing, and so it's worked out really well because it lets water through, and it's a, it's a compliant surface for ADA as well as fall heights and all of those things that they have, so. People ask, oh, that's about ten thousand, no, not, not the things that we buy. Installation though is a big part of that, you know, labor costs being what they are, it's about half of that cost actually is to install it. So, it'll continue to happen, one of the things I'm working on now is getting some bids, we're gonna, I'll come to the Finance Committee here in August and talk about more continued playground replacement as we move forward because it's been awfully popular and it's been a big hit, especially for the people that are down at Hapry, so. Yes, Mary?
Update on the Phase Two Park that will be worked on this next year, or is all of the time they go all the way?
Highlands, is that where you're from too?
Yeah, North Highlands, Phase Two.
Yep, so, uh, where we're at in that is, we are going to be getting close to going to final design on that, on that park. If you remember, there were two lots, um, both about, well, I think the total size, Melissa, about three-quarters of an acre with two lots combined, that's straight or directly north of the water tower, were the two lots that we mutually agreed upon between the city and the developer as setting aside for a future mini neighborhood park. And so we did initial conceptual design with JEO, we will be moving forward here in the near future with final design as per our subdivision reg- uh, agreement, I should say, with that developer, and then probably in another twelve months to eighteen, starting the construction of that as things continue to build there out of Highlands. Right now, preliminary plans, nothing crazy, a playground, um, some courts, maybe a couple of pickleball, maybe a basketball court, a picnic shelter, little trail runs through it, that kind of thing, so it's, it's not gonna be huge. I would compare it to maybe something like Bel Air Park, a little neighborhood pocket park that serves that, that area, so. Now, like I said, final design, we'll be moving forward, that money's been budgeted for, allocated, just a matter of getting a contract signed for that, so. And I think we're on pace for that.
And the, the parking was all before that park was installed with phase two paving, and with the preliminary design being, conceptual design being completed, we were able to make sure that all of the utility connections were laid out where they need to be when the water, so we're.
So, there are park, if you drive up, um, refresh my memory, what is that street?
Um.
Would that be Oak?
Yeah, Oaks would be, yes.
Um, there are. There are, you can go up there in the parking, as Melissa mentioned, there's nine or ten spots, including maybe a U-spot. So that's all ready to roll.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The JEO Wahoo project?
That's just for your information. I said it's in there just for your information. If you have any questions on those projects, let me know.
At this point, these reports are very valuable to us. But I want to welcome Kelly Johnson back. He's been out on the sports trails and all those types of things with Summers County Online. But this is a good opportunity for the public to get an update also. So I appreciate you being able to be back from here. We'll move on, consent agenda. We have three vacancies on the planning morning and all three of them signed up again.
Four adjustments. There's two vacancies. I told them both those are.
Paul is over there. Paul is coming back up.
Paul is back on, tennis new.
Correct.
Replacing.
Erica's in all of them. The dues that are listed on item number five, those are, it's the same rate that we have paid for membership dues to send for many years. And it's definitely worth the investment when it comes to assistance for grant applications and.
Any claims in there, nothing in there? Motion to approve her consent agenda.
Any questions? No call on the consent agenda.
Gracie?
Yes.
Raffler?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Nabel?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
We have no public hearing, but we have some action items not requiring a public hearing. The first one is discussion or causal action regarding Phase Two of Kennedy Campus South Hall project. Melissa will give an update and then we'll throw it up for public comment.
So what I'm reading here is an email that Mike sent to me. He said, I will, I won't be able to be present at our meeting. Today I have another city council meeting for another project out of town. Please find my comments below. He did speak about Phase One and Phase Two for Kennedy and then Wahoo Super. And I'll just review what he has on Phase One. I have filed a protest for Kennedy Phase One real estate tax assessment with the county assessor and will work through, with the clerk. Will work through the process to see where these taxes actually are signed. He included the protest document. I don't believe that either twenty-four, twenty-five assessments are accurate. So I'll be working through this long process as well. To address your previous arrangement, I would like a fifteen-year clock to start with twenty-twenty-five as the base year so we can extend the TIF as far as possible. On that point, I believe at the last city council meeting, I talked to you about an August one deadline for filing the notice to divide taxes. I learned today when I was talking to our TIF attorney that in this legislative session, twenty-twenty-five, and I knew this, I didn't realize that the effective date of that was so soon. But those notice to divide taxes needed to be filed by July one of twenty-twenty-five. So the August deadline being moved to July means that we did not get the notice to divide filed. So an amendment to the agreement to extend that effective date to January one, twenty-twenty-six. Which means then that his TIF clock is set back a year is appropriate. I did do the calculations and it is a very, very minor difference in the amount of TIF revenue that would be made available because of that delay. And I can answer that more directly or if you have any questions, let me know. Regarding Phase Two, his comments is, I would like to move forward with this project as Phase One has had a lot of input and build out to consider for Phase Two. The dates will push back, but the project design intent and community feel will stay the same. I understand the park and green space is a sensitive item for, via Mrs. Daley's comments, I think green space is great. Though I think our initial design has a good amount of green space, the scale fits into the community and will continue to be a great place to play. Also, if we reduce the parking requirements, we can have more green space. So that's him making the plug for less parking stalls like, which is nothing new. We all know that. The comments that I have regarding Phase Two, I, I did spend some time visiting with Gary Daley and explained in our redevelopment project agreement, it's very specific as to the details of what he's going to do. So the number of units, the number of bedrooms were all specifically detailed out, as was the park improvements and the specific size of the park improvements, a full court, basketball court with fencing, with lighting. So those details are all pointed out. And I just want to make sure that you remember that in your conversations, just as a refresher. Also, one thing to point out that I was, I was talking to Jerry this afternoon, this morning about is that with the Phase Two and moving forward, if you decide to move forward with Phase Two, we are getting a park that's paid for with the TIF revenue. If we decide not to move forward with Phase Two, that park improvement, if there's going to be anything that, something that we are then funding ourselves. So that's just a point that I wanted to bring up to make sure that it was on the forefront of your plan. With that, I don't know, Jovan, is there anything that, not putting you on the spot?
No, I don't think so. And I did reply to Mike's email and indicated that my general observation at the last council meeting was that that your, your general sentiment was if you weren't going to take action on Phase Two until you're prepared here, the end of Phase One. So I wouldn't anticipate you to reaffirm that this meeting. But I did indicate to him that obviously that's your choice as to, if you're ready to say yea or nay, you certainly can. But I think you made fairly clear to him that, that he wasn't quite far enough of his one to do that.
I think there is some interest, not only obviously from the public, but from Mike and, I know I've had some conversations with Kevin from a planning standpoint about just making a decision and allowing the decision to be had and everyone can move forward. We can stop rehashing this conversation over and over and over. I mean, I do understand Mike's point that we accepted proposals. He presented his information. We agreed that it was a good thing. We incorporated what we wanted to see out of a park space into the redevelopment plan for that project. I also understand the position of the delay in time. So that's the fall is in there.
The only thing, the only reservation I would have is, obviously, all you would be doing tonight is saying, do we want to continue on that back for Phase Two? Because ultimately, he's got to give you new dates, right? That's something that we don't have on Phase Two is, when is the commencement, when is the completion date contemplated under Phase Two? And I think he's given us general observations of when he thinks that might be, but I don't think it's been any, any concrete at this point. But beyond the dates, I think the only other question is the questions the community has raised for the words to the park issue.
So at the last meeting, Jovan and I did, more Jovan, direct him to have an amendment prepared and sent. He did prepare an amendment and sent it to us. We received it. And I forwarded that on to our TIF attorney for conversation. That's when I learned that we've missed the date, the timeline for filing with a January one, twenty-twenty-five effective date. And so her point, their point on it was that we can wrap all of these things into one amendment. And the time is not as much of an essence as far as the effective date goes on Phase One, the June of filing. So we have a period of time to get that amendment adopted for that change in effective date. And it makes sense to include all the pieces into one amendment.
And similar to what I think we're contemplating in the Wahoo Super project would be a, for lack of a better term, a punitive clause in there that talks about the loss to the extent that deadlines aren't there. And so it would be very important that whatever deadlines are written into the document, he can actually hear to. And obviously, he's making significant progress this year on both Phase One and on Wahoo Super now. But I think we all, and we all hope that that continues going forward. But I think we can't be oblivious to what happened last year and the six months before that. I'm going to have something in the document.
Got an update? Anybody want to speak?
Yes.
Yes.
Of course I do. I'm Mary Daley, for all you who don't know me. I did some research for the last few days. And I have these for you guys. Kevin, I have a picture for you. For Republic, I made extra copies so you guys know what we're talking about as we talk. So this time, I really hope, I don't get alert on my watch that says the blood pressure is at a hundred and forty. Calm down. So I'll try and be more with it this time. I have a friend who's a builder. And he offered to flag for me how this would look. So I went to the City Hall to ask for a copy of the blueprint. I was informed there are none. Okay, Phase Two, no blueprint. So I thought that was really weird, how we can even think about doing this. Because when I was putting on a garage to my house, before I could even put a shovel in the ground, I had to present a blueprint. I had to show the dimensions of my garage, where it was placed on my lot, how big my breezeway was going to be, those dimensions. And then how much concrete I was going to have, and all those dimensions. But we don't have a blueprint. So can you guys help me understand how I have to have a blueprint to get things done, but he doesn't?
He will, it's just he's not to the point of having a certification for building.
But then how can you approve this? If I can't be approved without a blueprint, how can he be approved for Phase Two without a blueprint?
He's not being approved for a building permit. He's being approved for the development reason. So when, when this project originally started, there was a request for proposals to the public general. And all that was asked for in that original P was design renderings as to what the project would look like. And so he and I think there was only one other bidder or, or proposer at that, gave the conceptual renderings. And the agreement was approved based on the conceptual renderings, understanding that, that once Phase Two would go through and before construction could commence, he would have to have actual engineer drawings, just like he did on Phase One, before a building permit would be issued. So just that, that step will come if they continue to pursue Phase Two.
Okay. Okay. Then my next thing is, while I was at City Hall, as you said, I had access to the agreement. And just, and I know you guys have seen all these, but I just did this so as I talk, you can look at the map. It's just so you guys have point of reference kind of thing. So on this proposal, which I granted is not the blueprint, can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Which is not the blueprint, but he has his green space, which is called the Wahoo City Park, okay? So according to his proposal, on this page four, it says, "The improvements to the adjacent city park, including a basketball, pickleball court, playground, picnic tables and shelter, associated improvements on Phase Two project." Then it goes on to say, "A minimum shall include a sports court area equal to full-size basketball court." Okay? But a full-size basketball court is ninety-four foot long and fifty foot wide. According to what he shows in here on this print, it is eighty foot wide and sixty-eight foot long. That is not even coming close to the full-size basketball court. Then, if you look at this.
I just want to also point out in the bottom of that scene, it says, "Park cropping line dimensions are approximate and can be verified with site survey dimensions." As well as in the explanation that you were referring.
Okay, but see, we as taxpayers don't get that. We haven't seen a blueprint. Yeah, this may vary, but it may stay the same. We don't know because we don't have a blueprint. There is nothing to verify. Yes, it is going to be this big. This is all we have. So this is what, the knowledge that I have based my little talk on is what I can get off of here, because that's all I know. So I'm wondering where the swing and the picnic tables and the, what else was there?
Pickleball.
Pickleball, the shelter are all going to go in that small area. Then another thing that bothers me, you guys were talking about this new park, okay? Make sure that it has plenty of parking. Where's the parking at? We got the parking all, all there. On this proposal, again, I have to go with what I have in my hand. The parking for the park is way up here. So it looks like essentially that this area belongs to this building site. In my opinion. My next point is that this is the only park that caters to all age groups. So there's kids out there on their bicycles, learning how to ride on the basketball court with their grandparents. There's high schoolers playing basketball, pickleball, pickleball, excuse me. There are kids playing hopscotch out there. There's kids having the green space and playing football. That accommodates everybody. That's the only park that we have for high schoolers that is outside. That space is flat. So it would accommodate a pickleball court. It would accommodate a tennis court, which Wahoo does not have. And wouldn't that be great to have a tennis court? That area could accommodate all that. Then we could truly say that this is a ballpark. It's a basketball park. It's a pickleball park. It is a tennis. And yes, we can have benches there for people to sit on as spectators and watch. And yes, we can have a couple of swing sets. July fourth, I sent a picture with you guys. Everybody has this picture. That's what was going on in the park, July fourth. I took that picture from inside my house through the window of my door, because I didn't want to seem freaky outside taking pictures of everything. So that's why it kind of seems so distant. But you can see, how many kids are using that? And you can see that beyond the car, there's kids behind the car using it. That was July fourth in my neighborhood. And isn't that great? That was July 4th in my neighborhood, and isn't that great? They were all high schoolers. There was no planned activity. Those kids got together and did their own thing.
Fourteen of them.
Right?
I counted fourteen.
Oh, you counted fourteen, oh, yeah, okay. Isn't that great? Fourteen kids were there, not disturbing anybody, just having a good time on July 4th. And that's what a park should be. My next thing is, it bothered me that I only had time to collect another fifty names, which I did put a copy of those names in there. So a hundred people that I've talked to, not one of them, not one of them knew of this project. Now, if we're transparent, why didn't they know? Why wasn't, I know we don't have a very good paper system, but why wasn't it put out in broad letters, put on billboards, "Hey, we got a park going on here, or we got a development going on." This is a city-owned park, paid for by our tax dollars. And people enjoy that park. So anyway, it was kind of bothering me, I only got a hundred names, okay. Then it dawned on me, with the help of some people, that in 2006, the citizens of Wahoo voted for the half-cent sales tax to build the aquatic center. And wasn't that grand, because they want to keep Wahoo going. They want to see green space, they want to see things for kids to do. 2016, it's paid off. Yeah, yes, we have less taxes. But then in 2017, it was on the ballot to keep that half-cent tax to fund all the parks, all the parks. Kennedy Park is one of those parks. So the money is there to fund it. Now, if we can invest money on a, an area of development, and you may have a small basketball court up there, you may have a small pickleball court up there, but we have a full-size court. We have a full-size court. So Wahoo spoke to you guys. Wahoo spoke to its governing board and said, "We want our green space. We value our green space, and that's why we will agree to keep that half-cent tax all this time, because we do value our green space. We value having our kids being able to do things, and we should value all of our kids, no matter what their age is, to do things, which is play basketball, play pickleball, play tennis. We want our green space. And now it's your job, is our elected governing board, to uphold what the voters want. It is your job to keep Kennedy Park." I have heard contractors, and I did talk to contractors, believe it or not, sometimes they change plans, and sometimes it doesn't go through the proper channel. And what I was told, and this is honest to God, I was told this, that it's easier to ask for forgiveness once it is done. Once it is done, then it's like, "Oh, sorry, change of plan, you can't expect me to tear down this three, three townhouses now, because it took up a little bit more room in these townhouses and the parking lot. Look how big the parking lot, it took us more. So, oops, we're sorry, forgive me." I don't want you, as the representatives of Wahoo, to have to say to the rest of us, "We should have, we could have, but we didn't." Please save Kennedy Park.
I think the public should know, and I think those that have been involved with this, and a lot more involved in it than what a year ago, whatever, most of our time has been spent on financing the tip, the agreements like that, which he is drug his feet on, and he realizes he's behind. So we haven't even gotten to the point where we can start talking about the park, the construction of it.
But isn't that the point, Jerry? And forgive me, I don't mean to belittle or sound ungrateful or anything like that, but the point is, why should we be talking about it? Why should we? That is a park. That is what our tax dollars have gone to. And the fact that all these hundred, these hundred, hundred people that I talked to knew nothing. And my neighbor, he kept telling me, "No, Mary, you're wrong." I said, "No, I am right, I am right. Go find out, call, call your councilman. Call your councilman, so that way you know I'm not making it up." And I, and every, these people are some of the people that signed the petition. You can ask them if they knew about it before I told them. They're gonna tell you they didn't. So the point is, it shouldn't even be a point of discussion. Space Two of Kennedy shouldn't happen. That is a public park, paid by our taxpayer dollars, that can be utilized, and that is utilized as a park. We need our green space. If we have money to make a new park, why can't we have money to fix an old park that gets utilized? I don't see, and granted, okay, so he didn't have to have blueprint, but if you look at what he gave us, and we have to base our knowledge and our plans based on what he gave us, it doesn't look good. It doesn't look good for Kennedy Park. It doesn't, it's not accessible, it is not usable. I mean, one of those things that I told you guys two weeks ago, is that when I was going house to house to house, and I got invited in, and the kids told me, the reason that they didn't use the, the basketball courts down at the park is because they weren't full courts, that the reason that they used them up on Locust Street, it's because the only outdoor basketball court that they can use. We want stuff for our youth constantly, so why are we taking away from our youth? We can put in all new programs, but we have some solutions for the, for what's going on now. It is truly being used. It's not a pretty sight, I mean, they go there, like Kevin says, he's got there mowing grass all the time, and the guys are there, because there's a bunch of cracks, but they go through the court, and they try and make it as smooth as they can, and they weed eat all the weeds in the cracks of the basketball court. But you know what the kids and the adults that use it, don't complain, do they? Do you ever get a complaint from people playing pickleball up there? Well, you probably do, because, but I mean...
That's for it.
I think that's part of the issue, a lot of the complaints is there needs to be replaced, and this was the case of...
No, it's not a mechanism. What you're doing is taking it away. It's not a mechanism to fix it, it's a mechanism to get it off your plate. It's a mechanism to say, "We don't want to build a court like that again." But what the people are telling you, and they voted for it, or, you know, they're saying, "We want our green space." And Kennedy Park was part of that in 2017. And since that, since 2017, it hasn't come back up on the ballot to take that half-cent away, has it? So Kennedy Park still is part of it. Now, if you choose not to do anything with Kennedy Park, that's on you. But the people of Wahoo said, "We want Kennedy Park. We're going to pay that half-cent tax to keep Kennedy Park as part of our parks." So you have to listen to the voters. They've told you what they wanted.
Well, I will say this. We meet every two weeks. We publish it. I agree that the papers are not probably sufficient in the past, and are probably worse now. But it's not our responsibility to go around everybody and tell them what's happening. There's public notices out there, public meetings about that, and so...
I, I didn't mean that it was up to you guys at each individual. I am just saying, you know, if I had the money, I probably would have put up a billboard, "Hey, are you aware of..." I'm not asking you guys to do that. I am just saying that people were not aware of it. There was no way to really get the word out to say that this is what's going on. And I had people say to me, "How can they sell that to a developer if it's a public park?"
Because we try, are trying to protect the park that is a park, which is a, not a full court. We want it to be full-size, and what you've described is full-size.
But what he is showing us is not...
But it's contracted and voted, so this is preliminary.
Okay.
In the contract, it says it's voted. And, and that's my only question, is, is the issue that if a, if a comparable-sized court is constructed in this new area, does that resolve the concern that you've expressed?
Well, but it's not accessible. Hey, look.
Well, the park is known as the same area it currently is.
If, if it's in this corner, it's not accessible. As you were talking about parking at the new park, the parking is over here.
Which is where it currently is, but they're actually being new installed.
But currently, the, the court is right here, and the swing sets are right here. This is another issue. Okay, so we got parking this way, it's parallel. Okay, so if you're parallel parked, you're stuck out there. You've got two-way traffic there. That is obstructive. Go put your car parallel, and then go get a big truck, like I did, and then go get another big truck, and you try and put everything together there. So this, if he has the parallel parking, it's gonna have to be recessed in.
Yeah, the, the issue there, I, I certainly, I, I understand what you're saying, the problem is that's right of way, so that'd be the city's financial obligation to construct improved parking.
So we would have money to construct this, but we don't have money to construct a new basketball court?
We, we aren't constructing any of it.
Well, you said it would be up to the city to construct that.
If, if we were to improve, if we were to add more parking than currently exists, that would be the city's obligation, not the developer's obligation. And that's what I'm saying, the reason why the, the parking can't be approved is to be improved at the city's dime, and the city doesn't have the financial means to allocate towards improved parking there.
So I guess I, I just not understanding why you don't want to keep the park. Please tell me, why don't, why don't you want to keep the park?
For various different reasons, I think housing was deemed to be incredibly important.
Okay, so you're going to gain nine units. Okay?
Yeah, the Phase One and Two, so just to give you some background, Phase One, that property was acquired by the city through a fairly lengthy process with the prior under laws basically going into fall. So the city then came into possession of a dilapidated building that it itself wasn't going to do anything with. And following the housing study that came out, which said, "We need housing, we need, we need smaller housing, more portable housing, we need all those things." So this project was put out as a development project to address the, the housing, and that was the whole pretext to, to doing this, is we have an area that the city controls, which is, is grass and, and a, and a dilapidated building, which is there any developer that wants to do something with it to improve the housing situation of Wahoo. That was the pretext of it, and then to protect the existing usable park area, there was a condition of that development agreement that said, "You have to have a proposal that says how you're going to address the recreational use that you're taking from."
Okay.
And that this is one of two proposals that was made, and being the better of the two proposals.
Okay, so then I have a question. This is supposed to be part of the proposal. So on the proposal, this was written as part of the proposal too. So then why wasn't it drawn out in accordance to what they proposed? So you would see where they were going to put the big basketball court. So you could see where they were going to put the play area.
Yeah, all that was asked at the time was conceptual renderings, and so certainly that's something for the council to decide now before it, it amends the development agreement, does it want more than just conceptuals? At the time, what the feedback the city was getting is, "I, as a developer, am not gonna pay an engineer, a surveyor, an architect to do detailed renderings to pitch a proposal to you without knowing I'm actually gonna get."
Wow.
And so that's why every applicant only has conceptual renderings.
And marrying this to your, your kind of combining these two documents, please put the last statement you made. This was his conceptual, this is actually the redevelopment agreement.
Which in happens.
With the city creating.
So wait, now say that again, I'm sorry.
His proposal is the drawing, that was before, that's when he didn't know if he was gonna get the project.
So this is before you guys, you guys wrote up this, or we wrote up this?
There are two proposals that are made.
We wrote up, it was signed.
Yeah, that's the development agreement. Two proposals are made, we decide which is the best of the, of the two, and then we create a development agreement to contractually obligate the developer to do what is proposed, understanding that there are things like final renderings and, and designs and the like that still have to happen later on. And certainly you're taking over just to the fact that all the details aren't in that document at, at that stage.
Okay.
So if his basketball court's eight and one feet, our development agreement says, "No, smaller than a full court." So it would have to be ninety-four.
And if, if there's a question of what is a full court?
Right.
Or where is this, that, or the other thing, this would absolutely be inappropriate time to readdress that, right? If we want those extra details in the document.
Well, and I think the other piece is that, the last sentence of that paragraph says, "All improvements and park equipment must be approved by the C D A, which is this board, in its sole discretion prior to redevelopment, installing it, and upon completion and acceptance by the city shall become property of the city." So again, this board has the full discretion over what those improvements are going to be, to ensure that they're complying with our agreed-upon definition of what those improvements are.
And Mary, you raise a very good point, which is, we're semi-in the dark, right? We're in the shadows. We're not in the dark, there is something, but we don't know exactly what it's gonna look like. And so certainly, to be clear, the council wants to shed some more light on exactly what is gonna be where, how big is it gonna be, that sort of thing, within those general design parameters or concepts. We could certainly ask for, for that information.
Okay, I guess I still, I get that Wahoo needs housing. There's other areas that, that they can build. This is a paid-for existing park with the potential to have tennis, basketball, it can be expanded on. It's flat, easy to make those projects happen.
And the difficulty, I'm glad Kevin's up here. Kevin, how many unfunded projects that have been largely designed are there already sitting in the hoppers?
Well, I mean, yes, there's things in the queue as well, that are still up there, absolutely.
And that's the difficulty, is there's already a, a stack of projects that aren't city financed yet, that they're not able to fund.
Okay, then why did the new development take priority?
Well, that, Melissa raised a very good point. So that was a negotiated provision, is part of that development agreement, that says, "Hey, when we enter into a subdivision agreement, we, the city, want, we want recreational space in these new developments. So we want you, the developer, to do things like put the concrete out there, hook up all the utilities to the green space, and give us lots." So the developer had to give two lots to the city, and do all that utility infrastructure and street infrastructure around that new park. The city then, in exchange, because the developer wants, "Hey, it doesn't do us any good to give you two lots if there's never a recreational site there, right? We want to be able to market these lots to people who want to be next to a playground." The city's exchange for that is to, to guarantee that it will be built. And so that was a negotiation that was part of that subdivision agreement, and would be part of others. So J O's subdivision that's down by the, down by the Wahoo Trail side on... So J.O.'s subdivision that's down by the Wahoo Trail side on that, that was the negotiated piece of that, on the recreational side was a trail to connect to the Wahoo Trail, the city park trail side. And so that was the recreationally negotiated piece on there.
As well as the parcel of ground.
Yeah, and so that's just that negotiation you have, so that the developer has to pony up something, the city has to, in exchange for getting those things, agree to certain things and...
Well, I honestly don't, thank you, you clarified for me. I hope you guys don't, okay. I still don't think Nine Town Homes is gonna make or break Wahoo's housing problem. They're not going to be, it's, he's going to rent them out at whatever fair market value is. Now, I can tell you, I had rental property in Wahoo at one time. And I used to get calls from other people who have rental property that said, "You are cutting us short. Your property, you give, they're paying too little." The house that I currently live in, five years ago, we only got eight hundred dollars rent for it. And I used to get calls, as well as my sister did, "You need to have it up over a thousand dollars, you need to have that." Okay, so the fair market value on these houses may not be so cheap. Nine houses is not gonna make or break Wahoo. Nobody has said a word trying to discredit the use of Camel Hall. I think it's great. It was an empty building, he's making good use out of it. And that's, I give him a hand for that, 'cause he had a heck of a project. And I can attest that he is out there himself, cutting down trees. He is working over there on his own, on a Sunday, Saturday, his mom's bringing him water, you know? He's working hard on it. And nobody is contesting that. What we're contesting is that we still need our green space. And I would tell you, everybody told me, I'm just gonna be honest here. Mary, you need to put this on Facebook. Because if I can fill the hall, the council will listen. If all these people fill it, they're gonna listen because numbers speak. I chose not to do that. Because I don't wanna make it a fight, I don't wanna make it, "Well, we should be doing this, we should be doing that." That's not my point of this. And that's why I haven't done it. And that's why we have empty chairs. It's a good place. Nine homes isn't gonna make or break Wahoo, but having a place for the kids to go is a good thing. Maybe that's why some of our numbers are down. You heard the policeman talk, you know? I don't think you ever get called up at the Kennedy Park, do you? For any kind of disturbance or anything?
Once, since I've been here.
What?
Once since I've been here.
Once, and you've been here how long?
Three years.
Okay. So, I mean, the kids that use it don't cause a commotion. And like I told you back in September when I was here, when they were there playing basketball and the music was really loud, and my neighbor who had a newborn walked over there and said, "Hey, I gotta be, can you turn down the music?" It was not an issue. It was just, turned it down, no big deal, they went on to play basketball, and Wahoo went back into the house. It's a good space. And I hate to see us lose it for nine houses that isn't gonna help Wahoo's housing problem.
I'll go back to my original statement and maybe add a little bit to it. We've been trying to work with the numbers, we haven't even gotten to pass the document that Dee has laid out, because it's not detailed and no good. He's made changes to the project at Wahoo Super. He hasn't given us any new plans on how to, what he's doing. He says now all my parking can be on the campus, on the cemented surface. We don't know that, because he hasn't given us that. He's trying to operate differently than I think the developers should be operating. So we're far from making a final agreement. We're here tonight to discuss, shall we continue to try and work with him on the finance side of it and put some new deadlines out there for him to come up with the plans? Well, we, he details very well of what this agreement says, and it's in there, he's gotta live up to that.
Well, having said that, okay, at the last meeting when I was here, you guys told him like, okay, Wahoo Super had a deadline, and it was like June 30th. So what'd he do? He went in, and it's nothing against Mike, please don't think that I don't like Mike, 'cause I think he's a really good person. But he went in, they tore down two-thirds or three-quarters of the building. They didn't even tear the whole thing down, but he met with the terms that it showed that he was doing something. Now, everything's just laying there. The whole building isn't even torn down yet, but he met with the terms.
Picture that, has been handed to us. I saw him the next day after the council meeting, when he brought the machine in, had the fence up and everything, and was starting to tear it down. And he says, "I'm on schedule, it has nothing to do with what the council said last night." I discussed it with him then. He didn't like some of the comments that we made. I said, "That's what we're hearing from the public."
Yeah, well, and it's still a mess. So I...
Appreciate your interest and support of it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else?
Yeah. Excuse me.
State your name, please.
Cheryl Summit, thank you. Very quickly, just...
Can you take your address as well?
Oh, eight sixty-nine West Ninth Street, Wahoo. Did I get it? Okay. Thank you. Two things real quick. As far as affordable housing goes, real estate people will tell you, location, location, location. If you have sports, it's like anything else. The apartment complexes that rent out are the ones that have the gyms, that have the sports complexes, that have the amenities with them. This is not going to be the most affordable housing here in Wahoo. Just to let y'all know. The second part I have a problem with, on page four, maybe it's just me, but I'd like to bring it to your attention. First paragraph, Phase Two shall. That's not a will, that's not a maybe, kinda, sorta, that's a it-will-be. And it lists pickleball, basketball, playground, picnic table, sheltered, associated, blah blahs. But if you go down to the insert, the second sentence from the bottom, additionally, the public park improvements may include. We need to take the may out of there and put a shall, because may falls in too easy to the, "Oops, my bad," easier to ask for forgiveness than to get permission. That's all I'm saying. So if you guys can do your legalese or whatever, I just don't like wiggle word or post to employee to make contracts. It's like, that may is driving me crazy. Because I've seen it used over and over. Well, it doesn't say we have to. It says we could. If we're talking about where it already says shall, then make that one say shall also. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Okay. Steve? That wasn't the thought I was at all. Main Street Guts, it was twelve sixty-nine North Locust, right across the street from the construction. Now, first thing I noticed is, he's still got angular parking on here. I've been told that that's not gonna be parallel parking. I don't know, from the contractor. So that's, must be another thing he's doing without your notice, that he'll ask you for forgiveness of. Have you noticed the little water hole behind the building? And the water pit going down to the Eleventh Street? Supposedly, it's not all the way there yet. The last few rings have filled them up to overflowing. And eventually, if you get a two-inch ring, those poor people down the hill are gonna be in real trouble. What else? I've got a list of things that are all off in my head right now.
Steve, is that on the Camel Hall property?
That's on the Camel Hall property, goes across south of there, it's supposed to go to Eleventh Street. It stops about halfway there, gets filled up with water. And there's still animals living in the ceiling of that building. And he doesn't have the roof tied down good, it's nailed down probably every four inches. If that starts tearing loose, that whole roof's gonna raise right up and go again. He's supposed to have some kind of metal wrapped around that to hold it down. I mean, he's getting way ahead of himself, 'cause that roof should have been fixed before they either started inside. So, yeah, the parking on the, uh, what side of that building is not gonna be against the building, it's gonna be facing the other direction, towards the Kennedy Campus, yeah. So this is not right either.
But that, to your point, yes, I agree. But to your point, after that, as part of the, after this proposal was submitted and as part of the approval of Phase One and his plans, the question, the parking plan in a much more detailed rendering came to the city council to approve, right? It went to the planning commission as well as the city council, because that's one of the parking plan approval on a project like this has to make. So to your point, yeah, this is conceptual here, the reality was different.
Okay. Does anybody on the planning commission conceptualize how many people are gonna be driving in and out of this? Onto One Street? Uh, Locust Street?
Um, I don't know whether they conceptualize or not, I know that...
Well, it should be conceptualized, before you start on a project like that.
I would agree, because that's a dead-end street.
It's a dead-end street. No way to get the snow out of there on the one. You're gonna push it against the sides or into the middle, the side. There's a lot of things wrong with this project that never got looked at very well. And that's the planning commission's probably fault. And you guys' fault, too.
Hi, my name is Chris Yarger, twelve, and I am off Sigmar Street.
You just like housing?
Y-A-R-G-E-R.
And Radisson?
Twelve oh nine North Sigmar.
Okay.
So when you talk about backyard, that's my backyard. My butt up against the basketball court. So my first question is, Melissa, you referenced, this has been hashed and rehashed and rehashed. When was this? Because, like she said, nobody knows this, and I know it got put in the paper, so all ninety people who subscribe to it probably know that. But that's not a very good way of communicating when you want. That's a good way, when you don't want people to know something, but it's not a good way when you want.
The city council meeting.
Ask the county say that's above the court.
I'm sorry, okay, so, thank you, Mary, for letting us know, because we, none of us knew. So I went back and looked at the city of Wahoo Facebook page, and I did find something on May thirteenth, or something about housing on May fifteenth. Is that right?
This would have, the regional notices would have probably been over a year and a half ago.
Okay.
Because it was housing study first, that happened a couple of years ago, then this project conceptually came out, then the proposals went out to the public, then there were council meetings following that.
Okay, how did the proposals go out to the public? Maybe that's a part I missed.
Yeah, they would have advertised the request for proposal.
Yeah.
Would have been both through the website as well as through the paper.
Okay, so maybe I didn't go back or nothing.
Yeah, and the difficulty is, with anything that's done, it's website, newspaper, are typically too many.
And it's published in three places around town.
Yeah.
Okay, that's a good thing to know, where are these places around town?
The post office, City Hall, and First Street.
Okay, so I guess the second phase thing, is there a reason that it wasn't on the city Wahoo Facebook page or anything?
We don't post it on page, there.
We don't, we do full meeting announcements on social media, they are all on the city's website, as are the minutes.
'Cause if it's something that's gonna affect a park in town, it seems important. Now, the two gentlemen, the police and the civic center, they both, when they wanna get something out, they both mentioned social media, but you know, mentioned newspaper.
Well, I think the police, to Joe, I want to speak for Joe of it, he was talking about other people putting comments on social media.
He said, he said some things on that.
Yeah, the only difficulty, and I'm certainly not arguing with you, is I would surmise that this particular topic's been talked probably twenty to thirty council meetings in the last two years.
I believe you, I totally believe you.
And so it's one of the more, if a person's paying attention to what is happening to say, it's one of the more well-known things in terms of projects. Now, understanding, what is difficult here is, say it's a new development, it's a new development, then there is a subdivision process, that subdivision process requires mailings to adjacent property owners and that. So there's a statute process for requiring notice to directly affect it. But this project and the vast majority of city issues don't require that degree of direct notice. And so that's one of the rare instances where you would see a sign being on the site or you would see, you would get a mailing as a neighbor to the project or the like. And so, absent that, they're all kind of, they use the same mediums to market everything.
Okay. So to answer directly, the request for proposals was published three times in the Wahoo newspaper in February seventeen during March third in twenty twenty-two.
Yeah. The newspaper, as you know, has such a little circulation, they don't even have a reporter here on anymore.
There's a sign of a public hearing posted on the property.
There was?
There's something.
Well, I thought so too, but nobody, nobody knew, the property ever saw it.
It wouldn't have been read somewhere.
I never saw one out there, ever.
Wouldn't have been part of that process.
It wouldn't have been part of that, no.
Yeah, no. It would have been on, you know, Kelly's thing through YouTube, there would have been a number of others to do it. And that's the difficulty, you're raising a very good point, but it's a difficulty that we've had, 'cause it's a, that's a reoccurring complaint, but every time we add a medium like, you know, Saunders County Line to it, it still doesn't seem to be kind of solving the problem.
Okay, okay. My next question is, it's like Mary said, we can, we have money for a new park, got by the new housing development, but we wanna take away the old parks in the middle of town. This almost doesn't make sense, especially because so many teenagers have so little to do here, and it's one of the things they do have.
I, I, I'll talk about this real quick, just 'cause I want to point this out again. We're not taking the park away. We're taking away a big chunk of the green space around it, moving where it sits, but there will still be park space there, the basketball courts, which are, obviously the thing that we talk about the most, is the basketball courts, which are being used, will be built new, better, nicer facility.
Okay, that'll be great. So my neighbor and I, we're discussing the size of this. So in the size of my yard, and part of hers, they're gonna put another full, so there's a full-size basketball court there now. So there'll still be one of those, and in addition to that, there's gonna be, how many townhomes and a shelter and swings and...
So they're tearing out, houses will go where the existing court is, so basically the development will be in an L, and they're shifting where the court will be, and there'll be a new court. And they're shifting where the court will be, and there'll be a new court in the other corner of the property.
But it's the same size?
Yeah.
It's a full-size.
Yeah, it's the same size because I'm moving the court out. But the piece of there is over-sized.
I think right now, based on G I S, it's like 100 times 60. And I mean, we're talking 80 times 50.
So without the same-sized court, in addition to that, it's already there in that space, so we move it over. But in the rest of that space, we're gonna get five townhomes and parking and a shelter and, and that size space?
So that's what the engineers told us.
Okay.
And there are, there are protections in our zoning regulation where a percentage of block coverage, in terms of, if you have so many square feet, there's only a certain percentage of that that can be covered with a building footprint.
Okay.
And so any plan that is submitted by the developer, the developer, has to comply with those zoning regulations as well. Because like you, we don't want to see property covered with all buildings, right?
Right.
And so if his real, once he gets to real square footage and real design, he may find that it's only 1% or with parking.
Okay.
Um, I mean, we haven't seen any of that yet. I think that's the.
Okay, so that brings me to my final question then. This process, I keep hearing different things about where we're at in the process and how we're at in the process. And will there be more chance for people to learn about this and come and speak to you in the process?
Every two weeks.
There, there will be that.
That's great, there'll be two weeks. Is this a done deal next week? This is what I'm saying. What is it, where are we in the process?
Yeah, so if, if he had not missed the deadline, there would be no amendment. This would be a done deal, right? Because it was entered into by both of the respective parties at a council meeting. The only reason we're able to have this conversation is because he missed the deadline. And so it reopened the negotiation, basically. And where we are in the process is in the early negotiation phase. From my perspective, he needs to get us at a minimum revised dates on when construction of Phase Two would commence and construction of Phase Two would be completed. Once he has that, then it would go on a council meeting agenda for additional conversation. You absolutely would have an opportunity to rediscuss your concerns, particularly as it relates to that new information he would be providing to the council, which is the dates of what's proposed. Now certainly, in the meantime, if one of the things the council says is they want more than just a conceptual lending on the recreational piece of this, that's something absolutely, I think, we can ask him for before we enter into the revised or amended redevelopment agreement, right? Exactly what will the dimensions be, get us the site plan, get us all of those things. Admittedly, he's not gonna wanna do that to the entire project because that's costly to have it all engineered when he doesn't know if the city's gonna sign a revised redevelopment agreement. But I would imagine, no promises, but I would imagine, we can ask for more finale just as to this.
Okay, so in two weeks, when we meet again, then it gets discussed again?
It could, but I don't know if we're gonna have the information from the dam
Okay.
to be able to actually act in two weeks. That's the biggest.
Okay, so it's not a done deal?
Yeah, what I would do, if I were your shoots, all of your shoots, is I would check the agenda in advance of each of the following council meetings. Because if this agenda item's listed, then you know that's a topic to be discussed. If it's not on the agenda under the Open Meetings Act, we can't act, we can't discuss the issue.
Thank you for that information.
Anybody else? The council. For him not being here to answer some of the questions that we will have. I don't know.
But yeah, yeah, I'm glad we're clear that we need to keep recreational space, we need to keep our youth, um, we need to keep production, ultimately. And apparently, we need to get some more detailed drawings on exactly how this is looking out.
Well, the agenda says discussion and possible life that we've discussed.
Do you need to talk about the January date for the tip to start? Did you say you needed something decided for that?
No.
No.
Right. Initially, when the deadline was August 1st, we need, we had a deadline to accomplish that.
So now we come to January?
Now, we have July 1 of next year to make any, uh, 26th to make the notice. Obviously, that one delayed that long. But my point was, we can incorporate that. If we're gonna do any amendment for Phase Two, we can incorporate that amendment for Phase One. And that can happen.
To get to the dump again.
To Melissa's point again, I don't know to what extent we can move forward. I think we need to come up with a decision. Somewhat in fairness to all of the people here, as well as in fairness to the developer on whether or not we're going to continue to move forward. If they were to come back and say, yes, we have the, the full-size basketball court in place the way that we talked about it, this project, it seems to be supported, something we should continue to afford with, or not. So we can, yeah, everybody involved probably has the same. I don't know, how many did you make it on?
You make it on.
What I think with Carl's saying is, if we get the plan, more finalized plan to show the court, is that something, if everything still matches up to what we want to see, is that something we're thinking, yes, we're gonna be more supportive of going that direction? Or if he can't give us any of that?
I think we're saying, if he came back, we're going to go with a full-size court, exactly the way with fence lights, we're getting full court with all the turf, everything that we thought we wanted to begin with, right? And we're getting all of that, but we're still not supportive of the project. We're not going to let it down, it's not costing people, we're not giving them money. We're still supportive of it, and we can say we can afford it, right? At least that's the way I see it. And I feel like we probably go towards you being able to come up with that decision sooner than later. And we can keep dragging it out, getting the rock down the road, but eventually, that's just time and money. Already while we're trying to decide. And nothing says, if we said yesterday, we're not saying go down the road, that is, you're gonna have anything to prove. Because then it's a failure at some point. We support the project, if it's moving forward or not.
Yeah, I think you hit the nail on the head, which is, if we're dealing with just the park piece, we can, we can deal with that for negotiations. But if, if you're in the position, I want the grass space to stay, I don't want housing there, then there's no reason to continue the discussions here.
I agree.
Okay? But if you want the housing, if you can get the park piece, then I think we continue forward.
I guess that's what I meant, you know, we had the housing study, we owe to mid-market homes. I don't consider the central level, we all know price points here are not the central level. It's a mid-market for home temporary sale for, there's an entire population that's looking for that kind of place that aren't ready to spend $350,000, $400,000 on a house. Looking for that mid-market, right? So it's me, I feel like, we still need, we're still in interest. I feel like we still need this. I do understand the concerns about the park. And I guess I, I didn't share this concern because I thought that we had to share in the agreement. We had that taken care of, right? We're gonna get the park paid for, we can use our tax dollars in other places. The piece that's out there that gets used with the park, I mean, the grass space is nice for the homes. But if you want to just run the park, you want to do this.
Right.
You know, when we start talking about other point of view itself. Or the basketball courts, which is added use there. If we can have a nice new one built and have housing.
And that's why in our RFP, we specified why it's there. We said that if you did, you'd have one of those, that court, heavier grading will be here under those that include the green space and that, so.
It might, I'm just speculating that maybe it's downsized the size of the court because green space required. So, I mean, that could.
I don't know.
I don't know either, it's about, I'm trying, I'm not trying to defend it, but I need to.
I don't know if it's downsized, maybe it's just. Throw a picture in there, never really trying to come up with actual, you know, the full-size court.
Yeah, hopefully. We don't have enough information on that.
Well, I'm sure as a developer, you're gonna try to, I wanna say get by, but you're, you're gonna wanna minimize the space that isn't profitable for you.
Sure.
So, I mean, that's just business.
Right.
And, and I think that probably wasn't his main component of this rendering, right? Like, he was more focused about getting the units and everything intense away. And so we can ask.
The parking stalls.
Right. And, and that's why our agreement is gonna dictate how the recreational spaces need to be set up. And it's also, and he's also gonna have to come back with parking plans and setback requirements and every hall that I have, that are gonna have to, gonna have to fit before it can move forward. So there's a lot of details yet to come, but this is all great to hear. Just when it comes down to, hey, we now do have an opportunity to go back and revisit this redevelopment agreement. And maybe we need to get a little more specific. A little less maze and a few more shells.
Yeah. I know I get really smart sometimes, if you want us to, why didn't you know this? You put information up and we do everything up in the open as we can. But at the same time, I love the idea of actually getting people's opinions because for so many things that we really hear, we don't do anything for them. So I do love that the opinions is made and handled.
Absolutely. No action taken?
Yeah, I, yeah, is there anything we can do to that extent to say? Because at the end of the day, what we're asking them to do is go spend more money on engineering for property that they have those. Because that's what we're doing, right?
I, I think, yeah, if you're taking the actions.
If we're gonna do anything, I feel like we have to say, you've gotta come back, provided you can provide these details, are we so much for? Details, what do you want, dates for finishing?
I think you need, you need, you need, A, first and foremost, to confirm what, if anything, within the scope of the project has changed, right? Terms of the building, the parking, all of that, right? Has anything subsequently changed from that? Because if it has, then we have to amend the tip further, right? I think B, we need commencement and completion for both dates. We can put deadlines and things with it. And I think C, what I'm hearing is, based on the lack of clarity to the public, you need firm details on the recreational pieces, the main park piece. Again, not full designs on the housing and parking and the else, but we need that piece to clarify.
With listing out A, B, and C, then really, there is a thing we can do tonight?
No, I think, just to Carl's point, if we're gonna go back and ask him to do those three things, I think it probably, out of fairness, you, they're asked at least probably a majority of you that if he can do that, you're supporting the project. That's a big F. But if you know, I'm a donor because I want to ask about housing, and there's three of you living that way, or four of you, then it probably ought to decide that.
I have one question, maybe two, Steve's point that he brought up on the water. Wasn't there, where Steve's been talking, is that, that beyond the east side of the property?
Beyond the east side.
Yeah, there's kind of.
They, they need a storm sewer, they're 30 foot that much concrete in one spot.
Right, wasn't there retention, there's.
Retention, huh?
There's retention.
That's just for the Kennedy, the apartment building.
Correct.
That's all that's for.
Yeah, because they haven't had two since there's been no building permit application. Do the drainage study for these condos.
Face case.
Yeah. They'll have to do that. And, and that's where you get into another question of, can it all fit? Can you make it work, right? And I, I don't think any of us know the answer to that. But they will have to do an engineer.
They could have an engineer look at that and all fit.
At what point does the deed for the land change? And what, is there a way to have repercussions in there for us to call it a fact? If this doesn't come to fruition? And I don't wanna get to the point where we deed it over to them, and then he says, oh, wait, no, this is a fit, the project isn't gonna go. And all this is tipped, I mean, is there a way to set that up before the project back?
Yeah, the difficulty there, and we kind of, we talked about that when we structured this. The problem is, as any developer would, they need the property and they're making the improvements and they need lending for it, right? And so they have to, at the outset of it, have to have the title to the property so that the property itself and all the improvements can be secured against the deed of trust that they have to, that they know against.
Can we put some kind of financial penalty against it then?
Well, that's what it's happened to me, would be like.
More than that, I'm thinking, project falls apart, can't fit it all in there, we did it over, something crazy.
Yeah.
You know, is there, you didn't put in what you were supposed to put in. You know, here's a huge chunk of cash. We gotta act the city so we can build something someone else can use.
You gotta have a lot of financing before you do it over anymore. You gotta have proof that you can get it.
Yeah.
At that point, that's down the road a long time.
And before you break down, you're gonna have the parking.
Before breaking down, and my thought is, before deeding it over, right? That's my biggest concern, is this is, as everybody's pointing out, public property right now. As soon as we do it over for somebody to start building, we'll do it on our own. So then everything falls apart, you did it for nothing. I just want to.
There's some kind of.
I'll think about that, it's a great point, which is to say, I mean, at a minimum, I would think that redevelopment agreement would be amended and agreed to. There would be the tip clause in there as to the loss of the tip revenue. There could be an obligation to secure financing, improve financing in advance of the deed. There could even be the obligation to make application for building permit and to commence construction within X number of days of, of the deed being issued. There's still that risk though, and all those things happen. And in the 30 days after the deed is issued, nothing happens, right? And so that's what I gotta think about.
I mean, we've seen before deeds pass with restrictions and requirements in the deed itself.
Yeah.
Depends on how far you wanna pursue to defend that, but you can do that in the deed as well.
Yeah, and we can have a clause which gives us a legal mechanism to, to foreclose against our interest if it's not done. But it's just, there's a long legal process that will have to get the property back, right? And that's not fun.
Well, that's so cute.
Yeah.
And I just, I guess that's my biggest fear right now, because we have seen projects that were, or go awry, or, you know, I, I just wonder at what point, you know, I think of Camel Hall to begin with, at some point or another, when that, that thing is happening, we're saying, we've already turned that over to them. And the only recourse we had was to say, well, we won't give the Phase Two. Well, we never thought about what we're gonna do about Phase Two. But we never had any option to be able to take back, you know, once we did it over, it's telling them to try to repair it, and we have to repair that.
I mean, we could, we could add a liquidated damage clause, but it's similar to the foreclosure issue, which is, gotta sue to recover, right? And is that likely to be done? Where, where there's a provision that says it's a $50,000 liquidated damage provision to the extent that you don't commence construction within so many days. But again, unless that money's held in escrow and the like, we're gonna have to sue for it. I gotta assume they can't. They won't be able to put the money in escrow because you're gonna have to go out and get financing for every dollar you can on the construction, but.
When Phase One has to be substantially complete, was that the right word? Before we even think about it?
And that's, yes, and that's, so that's really what I told him in the email, which is, I don't think you're gonna prove anything, no matter whether you can give us the park renderings alike, until you're satisfied that Phase One is just about done, right? Because that's your leverage right now. That's why he's pushing to get Phase One done, because he wants Phase Two. And you don't wanna get rid of that lever. Yeah, I think we need dates for that.
By order, I think a part of it is saying, I, I support the project because I feel like this type of, I'm needed however. I definitely wanna make sure that we're protecting ourselves in any way or another. With the court.
I agree with you.
I feel like that's super important.
Yeah, the, the projects, there is a need, after that was interned, that's kind of the direct reason why we're there.
I feel like the court is important, the obvious things for the services. In addition, uh, this protecting property, however, that gets done. I can't help but think, you know, somebody takes that on, does a whole bunch of work, realizes it isn't their work, cuts their losses, and then they sell the property, and whatever they sell it to, does that help? I agree with it a little bit. Can maintain all of those against somebody else while on that.
I think that's important, they did a whole bunch of work, and things, you know, from an engineering standpoint, they can actually do the work. And if they don't, then I guess that's kind of unknown, right? And we should be ahead of that. I guess, I just wanna make sure that that's all done, before we go with the project and go before we ever.
Well, and I think you're right, you raised the retention area, which is delineated down there in the bottom left, I think of that map there, but, you know, that's, they haven't done the engineering study for the condos, so the sizing of that and how it might affect court and all of that is something that perhaps we need to force them to do now.
Yeah, I think that for that project, by any commitment that he makes to that, to make sure that it is gonna work, it's gonna all fit in the range and that agreement we have. And stuff like that, that is his commitment to doing that.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, at the end of the day, that's all stuff you would have to do anyways. So whether he does it before or after we turn over the property, it's all along, you know? They just don't feel like we can turn it over to another project. I know, but that's not a financing thing, so it's definitely financing after that, and present.
So I think the only action that we would not have. So I think the only action that we would, not, would not, wouldn't be a vote, would not take any vote tonight between now and a time period later. Golden, Melissa, work with him to get his question before he comes back on the agenda. Might be in two weeks, it might be in two months.
Yeah. And, and I would expect it to be the latter. I know he's pressing for it, but I think it's going to be the latter because the detail we are going to want from him isn't something he himself can do, it's going to be my, my engineer, something else, right? That just takes time.
Okay. Appreciate the discussion, input from everybody. It's been a great opportunity for this dialogue. Okay, we have one other item, a lease agreement for six oh eight more than Linden. The transparent on this is something that when the library was built and City Hall moved from the south side of the building to the north side, the police department offices started to be torn down and remodeled. That never happened, been that way ever since. We've also had the issue, continue to have the issue of asbestos in the building before we can do any of that. So we've looked at locations in order to vacate that building so we can get those projects done. We've looked at three different properties. One of them would have worked, the other one, too much work to get it even ready to be an office. But the opportunity for this facility here, if you're not familiar with six oh eight, it's Lord Enstroll, has their offices now. They are moving out to Chesnut, on, right north of, well, between fifth and, and fourth. So they're moving out there, and we have the opportunity to lease their building from Interstate Bank. And we can enter into an agreement for three years, sixteen hundred dollars a month for the first three, and then goes to seventeen hundred with either twelve-month or monthly intervals. All of the utilities, all the insurance is covered in this lease. And so this is the best fit. Really, there's not any other that really is feasible for us at the time. We want to start on, finally get started on the removal of asbestos. So the staff has looked at this, and we have a lease agreement put together. So we are asking for approval to sign this lease agreement. I don't have any questions.
Joe, you're, you're, you, as if this is nothing terribly.
Yeah, this is a, an AI summary of their lease. So they drafted a lease, they sent it to me, I did make some red line comments to it. Nothing substantive. It's a very standard commercial lease, a few little tweaks, but, but yes, I have reviewed that. Who would review it before signing it?
Right here, he wants to do the whole thing.
No, I believe I will. Sixty reference, I don't know.
Yeah, I think, right, I don't think a, a revised red line has come back. So I think they sent us the draft, I made the red line comments, I asked AI to generate a summary, that's what you have there. And before it was signed, it would be signed, my comments would have to be revised at, at that time.
I'm just curious, because I want to make sure, and I know AI isn't always a hundred percent accurate. Mayor mentioned sixty hundred for the first twenty-four months, or for the first thirty-six months, and then it kicked to seventeen hundred after that. Today, this generation says we're getting to seventeen hundred at twenty-five, or month twenty-five.
Though he said that.
So, so it's the first two years, two years, at sixteen hundred, that kicked to seventeen. And then with slight modifications for two more-year options, two more foot options.
What, if this gets approved, we can sign by thirty-six?
We're probably here for thirty-six months.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's thirty-six.
Even if we're.
Thirty for thirty-six months. This, this gives us time to do some remodeling and.
Get the hard links.
Right.
Get done.
Right.
I guess with that, I would make a motion to approve the lease.
Any other discussion? Go.
Preachy?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Borfer?
Yes.
Rappel?
Yes.
Nagel?
Yes.
Yes.
Step that aside. Well, good. Okay, that concludes the agenda. I don't have any other things to bring up. The mayor's comments and councilmen, anything they want to bring up. That's the night.